I've got 8:30, everybody else got 8:30? Everybody hear me? Oh, good. All right. So, um.
Who's running this meeting?
Is anybody else talking to you? I don't hear anybody talking to you.
Yeah, everybody's being very quiet.
I've got you, I've got you.
I'm here.
Pete, why don't you take over?
Okay, uh, just if anybody wants to bring up anything, the important thing now is with Bill. Bill, how are we doing with the expenses and how are we doing with the, uh, the budget?
Well, I kind of lost here, wait a minute, I don't know how I'm getting back. Anyway, yeah, you can't see me against you, but anyway, yeah, we're, we're fine. I did ask Carl Sinder to, to come on, I don't know whether he's clicked on yet or not, but, uh, we, uh, we also want to investigate at this early part of this meeting, a storm sewer initiative or storm, I don't know, a storm water initiative, I can't remember what you call it, to see whether we could garner some additional funds for, or, for protecting our, uh, our town. But right now, we're in, we're in good shape, we've got, uh, we have, and as you can see with I sent out, we've got about 2.7 million in the bank, we, we've got the full $797,000 check from, uh, from the state for the paving and, um, you know, so we're on target for that. We have a few expenses that came up, we had a, we had a furnace go out and, which is about a $5,000 expense and we've got, but we've, then we've got some budget items with, the park department has plenty of money and they've put in a $16,000 set of stairs at stop 30. Can you hear me, everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, because I can't, I don't know what's happened to my, my, uh, my pictures here. Um, that's not what I want, okay. In any event, uh, is Carl on?
No, I don't see him.
Okay, I'm back, wait. I'm not sure where, okay, so he's, he's not here. I did call yesterday to confirm that he would be, uh, be on and I think I've talked to John Wall and we were talking about, uh, some assistance in that, but if he's, if he's, uh, he's not there. The budget is, is kind of in place, I've been a little remiss and I've got to get to street and, and police, but I've made our budgets that, that I will show to Laurel and to John Wall, uh, which we can adjust and, uh, but, uh, right now we've got Zoom thing is starting to get to me.
Do we, do we need to set some dates for approvals and stuff?
Uh, we, there's already dates, they're, you know, they require, if you remember Pete, that you, they require you to pick dates and they say, you know, it doesn't matter if you change the dates, but you have to have two dates in place. So we do have dates, that is Carl, we do have dates, um, uh, for the, for the budget hearing and the budget approval, which would be two weeks hence. But it's, uh, but we, but we do have those, we do have those dates established and, uh, I'll get them put on the calendar, um, and so everybody, so the residents can see it, but, yeah. I'd like Carl to, um, to kind of give us a little bit of input on, on that, uh, on the, on the storm, the storm water district that we talked about.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Go Carl.
How are you?
We're good.
All right, um, yeah, I think there were a couple of things, Bill, you wanted to talk about, but one, uh, you can form like a storm water utility, um, if you have requirements for the MS4, for, you know, um, keeping your storm water clean and for making sure contractors, when they're building, they put up proper barriers to prevent, you know, soil and erosion from happening. Uh, you can set fees, um, some communities, um, and I know that we've had some discussions with the Lepore County Auditor where they would even, depending if you use their assessment codes, you could put the fee on the property tax bill, even though it's a user fee, um, it's very possible you could have it put on the tax bill so you would collect it twice a year in June and December, but, um, otherwise, uh, there's different ways you can establish a fee. It can be based on the impervious area of a parcel and, um, so, um, there's, uh, different ways that, that that can be established. Um, right now, we've been seeing fees on a typical residential home depending on, again, what's your budget and how much money you want to raise, uh, can be anywhere from, you know, five, six dollars a month on an equivalent basis up to, you know, around 10 or 12 dollars a month. Um, we have a number of clients in Lake County that use the property tax, uh, billing system as a method for collecting their storm water fees. So, and then you could do some projects with it as well, capital projects, if you have some, uh, storm water, um, you know, if you're rebuilding streets, uh, what have you, you could use the funds for part of, uh, directing storm water runoff, um, um, so that, that's a very distinct possibility. Um, oftentimes, some of the communities instead, instead of establishing a separate board, um, they would have it in conjunction with their wastewater utility board, but since you don't really have one, then you would almost have to, uh, form a Department of Stormwater Management, so.
And how, how do we justify, if we decide that, that $10 a household per month sounds like a good number, um, we just have to have a hearing and we establish that as the?
Yeah, and probably what we should do, Bill, is establish some type of a budget. Um, you know, an operating and maintenance and capital budget that, that would help you justify that it's $10, you know, for various projects that you want to do and there may be some capital projects. So, you know, if you only have for operational maintenance needs of 750, but $2.50 could be used for capital, you know, certainly you can budget for capital.
The question we have is the, um, you know, things like, um, one of the things with this big paving project that we've got ongoing, um, is we see a real benefit in having a, uh, a movable, um, and John Wall can, can speak to what that, what that, uh, what that's called, but something that would basically replace the contractor flushing out or, um, or sucking out the, you know, the drains that have become, uh, embedded with, with silt and leaves and everything else. I can't remember what that's called, John.
A back truck?
It's, it's, well, we wouldn't get a truck, we don't need a truck really, but they make a hydro excavator trailer. Right now, we've, we typically, over the years, we've had old dry wells that we use. We don't have a storm water, uh, infrastructure such as a typical big city would have with actual storm drains. We have a lot of storm drains that run to the lake and we have a lot of storm drains that are just dry wells and to clean them out, to keep them functional, then you have, they, I'll say honey dip is the old term we used to use, which means you have to clean them out by hand, which is very inefficient and it doesn't really do the job well. So, we were hoping we could get it, you know, if we did the storm water management type fee, that we could do a couple of things, we could, you know, fix or, or, you know, um, repair these drainage issues that we have all over the place and also potentially get one of these machines so that we can keep these brand new dry wells clean, um, you know, more efficiently. So that's part of it, that we get some other benefits with that machine, it's good for excavating when you have utilities around, if we have a water mine break and that sort of thing.
Sure, Carl, who, uh, who manages this? Um, is, is this like a conservancy district where it's a separate body or what?
I think it would be like, um, they're considered a Department of Stormwater Management, so it'd be a separate board that the town council would appoint. And I think you can have either three or five members to it, so you, you'll need an ordinance to create, uh, the Department of Stormwater Management. And I'm sure your town attorney can, and we could work with him on, on finding an ordinance that, um, to set, establish one, uh, if that's something you're interested in doing. And then the rates and charges would be through a separate ordinance as well.
But the council, we need to generate, I don't know that we need to generate 100 and something thousand every year. If we, $10 would get you that, you know, 130 or something, maybe if we're half of that, we'd probably be adequate. That, that machine's about a, it's something less than 100,000 to buy it and it's a one-time deal and it'll last quite a few years.
Sure.
There are at least three or four drainage capital projects right now that I'm aware of, some of which might be as cheap as a couple of thousand dollars and, and one in particular is going to be about 7,000. Um, we have one, I see Mr. Rizzi's on, we've done some engineering and, and there's one that might involve half a dozen drainage structures and, and that thing's going to approach, you know, it won't be 100,000, but it'll be somewhere between, you know, 50 and 100,000 more than likely. So there are drainage improvements that we already know about that are significant and I'm, I'm certain if we, if we had this sort of revenue stream, we'd be able to tackle some of the more, the ones that haven't, you know, we've been doing whack-a-ball over the years rather than planning. This, this would allow us to plan.
Right, you can budget how many of these projects you could do in a given year.
And Carl, how long does it take to set this up?
Actually, I don't think it would take very long, uh, just a matter of creating an ordinance to establish, uh, the, the Department of Stormwater Management. Um, and then the council could appoint members, they could even appoint themselves, you know, I don't think there'd be any prohibition, um, for that, um, just depends how much, um, additional meetings you'd want to have and you wouldn't have to meet monthly and, to meet, you know, quarterly or however often is, you know, there are things to decide, obviously, projects and what the budget would be and the fees, those kind of things.
Does, does some town have a, have an ordinance, a sample ordinance in place that we could?
I could surely get you one, I, I know, um, the town of Merrillville has had, um, actually, yeah, they have a Department of Stormwater Management, um, and, um, they have a three-member board. Um, and it really functions as a separate utility, separate from the town.
Yeah, if you, if you could get that, I, I don't know how, how extensive that one would be if there's a smaller community that would have one that would fit us.
Okay.
Basically is just bare minimum. I, I've looked at some of these other ordinances and they go on and on forever.
Yeah, there's a lot of definitions in there, um, and that's kind of the way they were originally established. Um, I'll have to see if there's some other communities I could, um, draw from as well.
Sounds like it might be a good idea if there could just overlap between them and the street board.
Yeah.
Sure.
But, but I would like to see Carl investigate that, uh, because, you know, we're not talking about significant expenditure to start to put together things, because we always find that plagiarism is the, to get things done, you know?
Right.
And Carl, how, how are the funds collected? You say it could go on the tax bill and that, then is this like, pay, you know, 21, taxes of 20 pays in 21 and we don't get money till 22 or something like that?
Yeah, um, and, and that's the tricky part right now, because, um, you'd have to move pretty quickly. I know, like in Lake County, they're already sending out, uh, we have to review the billing list. Uh, they probably have a due date here in middle of October, um, that we have to submit it. Their data management department requires a large lead time, because then they want to get ready for sending bills out next April and that, so they don't want to have any glitches. Um, probably after November or beginning of December, they want everything kind of finalized. Um, so we would have to talk, um, with the county auditor, uh, with Joey Wensby about that. I know several years ago, on behalf of Michigan City, we had some discussions about doing that and then I think the, the city or the sanitary district decided not to move forward with that type of billing arrangement.
Does it have to go on the?
It doesn't, no, so you could actually add it to the water bill, the water utility could, um, put that on the water and maybe that's the easiest way and then you could do it whenever, you know, whenever the town council's ready and, um, if it's 10 bucks a month, um, and you typically, you know, since just about all the homes are single family, you have a few small businesses, the fee might be typically 10 bucks a month and then if there are some larger ones, we could maybe figure out maybe, um, uh, either for the schools or, or the larger, um, commercial buildings, which there probably isn't too many, um, you know, water and equivalent size, uh, so we could do something simple.
And we could, we could reduce, um, reduce it if, when we reach our threshold, if we, if we're shooting for 100,000, we could then say, well, we don't, we don't have to collect anymore.
Um, obviously you'd have to change the rates through ordinance and through a public notice.
Okay.
My, my counsel would be that it would be one less person to involve if we put it on the water bill and make it, and that would be a faster, we were already collecting for the leaf pickup, so it would be, uh, you know, and even though every, nobody likes to get nicked, I, I realized that we ended up, when we raised the, 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 uh, leaf pickup fee, $2, I got zero nasty grams, so, from people, so nobody noticed.
And Pete, I would think, once you establish the fee, you know, you're probably not going to want to, um, get rid of it initially, because it sounds like from John Wall that, you know, you have a number of projects that will take a number of years to, uh, to do. You're not going to be able to do everything in one year and so you probably put some of those projects on a rotation, um, however often you need to clean the dry wells.
And is there some guideline, state guideline that says what this entity could use these funds for? Like, you know, we've got, uh, MVH, we got to do it, or local road and street, we have to use it for streets and that kind of stuff?
The state statute does outline the procedures for establishing, uh, the storm water utility and so I think it has some broad purposes, um, um, I don't think you're going to be restricted and, you know, from the things I'm hearing, all sound like storm water management type, um, situations. But yeah, we could get you, we could get a summary of the statute for you, Pete, so you could see, uh, kind of what the overall parameters are.
Yeah, we, we need, we need to do that.
Okay, you know, for one small example is Tom buys special protection for silt into these catch basins, particularly the new ones, and, you know, he needs to keep buying those. So, you know, he's done that out of his regular budget, but it would be nice, but those are the kinds of things we could pay for with these funds.
Uh, that sounds like a valid pro, um, item for storm water manager.
One thing, Carl, I want to get with you about the, um, CCD re-establishment to 5%.
Yeah, right now your rate's like at four something, four and a half cents, um, let me look real quick. That's a kind of a, I'd kind of wait a few years before I would do that, it just seems like you're not going to, yeah, you're at four and a half cents right now for 2020, maybe once it gets to three cents, maybe you'd want to re-establish it, because you have to go through public hearings again. It, it's a big time-consuming effort to, to go through, um, uh, but, you know.
For, for those who don't. Yeah, the, the thing is, as soon as our, as our assessed values go up, the state nicks us and so you could never keep it at five cents unless your assessed values are going down, correct, Carl?
Yeah, that's right, um, because they neutralize the rate due to market value adjustments. Now, if it's new homes or new AV, then you get to collect on that, but if it's due to market value adjustments, a bill's right, they nick you, they do a neutralization and so probably next year, instead of being four and a half cents, the rate may go to four cents, so, um, you know, about $50,000, I think, Pete, would be the net increase, I think, to you.
Um, and we want that, I mean, that's important for us, because we want to continue going for the paving grants and that sort of stuff and, uh, you know, so, uh, just coughing that money up doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me. It's up to the board what they want to do.
Sure, sure, and, and it's, you know, it can be done, it's, you, um, you have to put together an ordinance on a notice. I have a public hearing, which the public gets to weigh in on and I know there was some consternation the last time we did this, um, but I think once you explain to the people that it's, you know, so you can raise for capital money, buy equipment and, and things of that nature, um, they understand why we had to do it. Um, and then once you get through the public hearing process and the council takes action, then there's another notice that goes in the paper that the auditor, it's, um, people can petition, if 10 or more people have objections to this, they can sign a form, file a petition with the county auditor and then we have to get a certificate. And so then once that period has lapsed, um, and there are no objections, uh, the paperwork then is put together, Bill signs it and it's all sent, sent down to the DLGF and they review it, if everything's in order, uh, you will get the re-established rate. Um, so the, soonest we can get reestablished, the rate would be in '22.
Carl, we're good at consternation here in Long Beach. If we went from 4.5 to 5, uh, cents, how much money would that net the town? How, how, what are we talking about?
I'm going to say it's going to be 15,000, maybe.
I think it's about 26,000.
And that's, and that's 26,000 every year and, you know, the, the advantage we've had is the CCD fund is the, if had we not established this when we did, we wouldn't be doing this massive paving projects. And that, that's where the money's coming from, to continue to apply for any kind of grant. We haven't found any grant where we get, we get free money, we always have to put something up against it and, uh, you know, we keep getting nicked on, on, uh, circuit breakers. Um, I think we lost over $100,000 on circuit breakers this year, so, just as they say, and, uh, we've got to keep running as fast as we can just to stay in the same place.
I want to make one quick caution as well, you know, remember when the fire destroyed the plows and we had to buy all new equipment and then it all failed roughly the same time, because we bought, you know, whatever we bought at the time and then that, that equipment's, you know, every year it ages, so there's, there are some capital needs for the street department that we need to kind of project out and think about, so I, I kind of think I, I'm in agreement with Pete in some respects. We need to keep that capital fund as stout as we can, because we're going to get hit with some of these equipment, you know, these plows, he's, Tom's nursing them along, but there will come a time when we'll have to start replacing them and the sad thing is, we don't have them on a rotation, they're all of the same age, because of that calamity.
Well, and our property values are probably going up faster than a lot of neighboring communities, just because with the pandemic, we've become a very desirable place to be, for people to live and my talking with the realtors, houses are not staying on the market at all, they're, they're just snapping them right up.
Okay, so Carl, can I get with you to set up the process for the CCD?
Sure, sure, actually, we can't really start it until the beginning of the year.
Okay, but I, I'd like to sit with you and just make sure I got all the, the count.
Yep, we can go over that.
Thanks, Pete.
Okay, the other, the other items, the only other two items are, how are we doing on the paving stuff, John?
They've, uh, mobilized, uh, if you were to ride by the town garage, they've got, uh, all their drainage structures, they're, they're, they come in, if you can imagine, um, it takes a little while to get some of the fancier ones built, so they've accumulated the simple ones and they're actually, we're scheduled to start installing yesterday. I think the rain set them back, so they're, they're in the process right now of installing the storm structures, that's the first phase of the project, once the storm work is done and the paving will begin. We're going to go, as we did last year, west to east, uh, there will be a map, if it hasn't already built, you can maybe help me out on that, I don't know if it's, if the information was put on the website yet, the, the thought.
I haven't, I have not checked either to see, but, uh, yeah, but we, but the schedule, uh, Tom explained to me that the, that the schedule that I saw was really for, for the drainage before the paving, so that goes in first, right, yeah.
Right, and then we'll adjust the schedule, we hope to have a link on the website such that we don't have to put on new whole, in, in other words, we don't want anybody popping open the website and pulling off bad information about scheduling, so the idea is to have a map color-coded with this, with the, uh, projected paving schedule at the point where they start that work, so basically, Pete, you know, you're going to have a month's worth of drainage work or so, a few weeks for sure, and then the paving will start and then that'll be a, you know, a month and a half or something, so between this month and October, it'd be pretty frenzied activity.
And is, has the water department coordinated their activities with our paving?
There really isn't any water work and, and Laurel can fill you in, but there really isn't any water in conjunction with the CCMG project.
No, there is none.
Okay. Right, and how, how, how are we doing on step 24?
24, the contract documents are all in, contracts are signed, they have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for this Thursday, that's tomorrow at 3 o'clock, uh, the contractor's gary up. We've, uh, I think you may have seen the emails, Pete, you may not have been on the, in the loop and I apologize, but what we did was, um, originally when we talked about the engineering and observation costs, the, the engineer, global engineering projected out about 20,000 in the public meeting and what we've done is, they originally were under contract for 6,000 of contract administration costs, which were already, uh, under contract for, but we've reduced their participation for the observation side down to about a maximum of 6,000, I'll, I'll be able to help with a lot of the observations, such that we'll save the engineering costs, um, so they'll still attend meetings based on that original six and then we'll, instead of spending 20, we should be able to spend somewhere south of 12, hopefully, you know, less than 10 even, depending on how things go, we'll, we'll limit their participation in observation, because I'll be able to kind of pick that load up.
Last thing is, uh, how about steps 21, 20, 21, 23 and 29?
29, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
All right, as far as 21 and 23, I've been, uh, trying to get a hold of the, um, delineator the last, uh, week and she so far isn't returning my calls, I hope she's okay. Um, but we need that delineation before we can proceed, once we have the delineation, then we can, uh, get our approvals from the Army Corps and the, uh, DNR, um, follow through with all the requirements for coastal protection ordinance and hopefully get things going before the storms start happening, but we're cutting it close.
Okay.
We have, we have a rough idea where the delineation lies, um, 29 is already applied for, I believe they've applied for their DNR and Corps permits, we have not as the town for the 21 and 23 yet. We probably should try to do that, I, I don't know if we need to have the actual delineation from her or if we can, you know, sketch something out. My understanding from Larry was that state had to do some survey work at 21 and 23 and it hadn't been done as of about a week ago, or at least he hadn't gotten the reports back. Have you seen that, Bob?
No, I have not. No, I have not.
So maybe we need to rattle fate's cage. We probably should start our own application process such that we can. The problem is, if we don't get permanent, just as an aside, anecdotally, I got a, an email from a friend of mine that lives right at stop twenty-one on the lake. And he said that the barriers have been knocked around significantly with the recent storm activity. So we, we're already going to have problems before the storm season starts. If we don't have these temp, if we don't have the permanent project underway, we're gonna have to go right back down there and start throwing garbage in. I shouldn't say garbage. Start throwing, uh, more whatever we can find to place again for temporary measures, which I hate to do that, number one, and you gotta pull it all back out again when you do the temp permanent. And then you've also had to expend all that, all those dollars on the temporary once again. You know, we spent, Bill, I think it was, what was it, ninety thousand or something last time?
Yep, no, it was, it was ninety-three thousand, yeah. One question for Carl is, is, um, one of the things that, you know, the only comforting thing you told me, Carl, was that we're better than Ogden Dunes as far as our expenditure. We're gonna have to, to beat off the lake. But, um, and the question I have is if we go, we're gonna need to borrow some money to spread this cost out. And Pete has, has suggested that, that what they did in Beverly Shores may not be possible. And Beverly Shores kind of pledged their streets. But I guess their, our street situation is kind of wacky. It was here in Long Beach with some owners owning part of the street and some not. And, um, but I, you know, I suppose we could put buildings up for pledge and things like that. But the question I've got is, is there, is there some way that, that you have seen that we could, we could give, give the lending institution some comfort?
There's several different ways you could look at financing, like the beach nourishment type projects. I think you have some of the sea balls or different things I think you have issues with, similar to like Beverly Shores and Ogden Dunes that need reinforced. And there's different financing tools. They did one. It's gonna depend, what is the size project that the town may want to con, consider?
Do you have, right now, Carl, we think that the, the two stops that we have to protect ourselves, we, we may have owner participation at one of the three, meaning the adjacent homeowners may pay for the improvements at stop twenty-nine. Twenty-one and, but there's a big negotiation that we're in the middle of right now. Twenty-one and twenty-three are probably gonna be north of a half a million, somewhere between a half and three-quarter million.
Each? Is that each?
No. That, that, those are rough estimates right now. I mean, I don't want to be held to those numbers. You're not gonna be a million dollars, let's put it this way.
So to, you know.
The total is six hundred to seven hundred for.
Yeah. You hate, you hate to issue, whether it's a general, the easiest way would be to issue a general obligation bond payable over ten, fifteen years, uh, whatever, you know, term, depending what you would want for a tax rate. But the cost, the cost of issuance, you know, by the time you get bond counsel, you get a financial advisor involved. Uh, typically, you need to have the bonds rated. They have to be sold on the open market, um, if you do a general obligation. And so you're incurring a lot of costs, probably a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars possibly. Well, maybe a little less, maybe seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars just in the cost of issuance. So if you can build up funds, uh, maybe, I know you have some surplus funds, and maybe you do one stop over one year and another, and another year. But if not, then yes, you, you know, general obligation would be one, what, that would probably be the cheapest and simplest way to do it. Um, and so it'd be a tax rate that would be put on your, everyone's tax bill. The way Beverly Shores did their project, they actually issued five million dollars in bonds. They created a redevelopment authority, and Bill's right. To make the bondholders comfortable, um, they decided to lease, um, parts of the streets in the town of Beverly Shores, put that as a pledge. So in essence, it, it is, uh, still payable from property taxes. But it's outside the constitutional debt limit when you form a redevelopment authority. Otherwise, like, for example, um, for the town of Long Beach, your assessed value is five hundred twenty-nine million eight seventeen. You can, as, um, for your constitution of debt limit, you take one-third of that times two percent. And that's approximately three and a half million dollars. So, and you presently have no general obligation debt outstanding. So you could issue bonds up to that full amount to be within the constitutional debt limit. The town of Beverly Shores, I believe, their assessed value is like a hundred eighty-five million. They already had a million dollars of bonds outstanding. So they really had no ability to issue a general, a second general obligation bond. So they had to do this redevelopment authority type pledge. I've also talked with Ogden Dunes at one point, if they were, you know, if they do it through a redevelopment authority, the statute does allow that they could have different zones, and you could charge folks different rates that they would pay so that those benefiting or closest to the lake maybe pay a higher rate than maybe those that are a little bit further away. That has some complications because you're constantly having to establish what that rate is each year for making payment on the bonds. And that's not necessarily, that's like a special improvement district that you would also have to form a redevelopment commission. But I think if you're talking, the, the dollars you're talking, I think a general obligation bond would be the simplest way to possibly do this.
Is there any way that a bank would just loan the town some money based on the fact that that debt ratio is as low as it is?
Well, the problem with the state statute is to do it as a general obligation bond, you have to set out, you're gonna have to have bond documents, and it's gonna have to be competitively sold. You just can't walk into one bank. Now, you could say, all right, bank, we're, on this date, we're gonna take bids. And they'd be the only bidder, but then how do you know you're getting the best rate if it's only one bank submitting a bid?
But can you, can you solicit a few banks and then get some different bids and then consider it? I'm, I'm just trying to think if you could save that hundred K you're talking about in bond post.
Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to think what the best way to do that would be.
Because to give you an example, Carl, we, you know, when we talked, we talked to a local bank about trying to finance the fire department, uh, station improvements that we would like to do in the future. And they were very cooperative and gave us some rates just for, you know, the first flush. In other words, you know, just let us know roughly what we'd be talking about and how long out we could, how long we could finance it. They seemed very cooperative, but as Bill says, that was revolving around a building improvement. So I don't know if, in general, whether they're able to do that.
Yeah, the, the difficulty you get into is you could, you know, you could structure a line of credit with the bank, but then you probably can't put your general obligation pledge on that. And when you start putting your general obligation pledge, then it looks like a bond. And that's where you need to have these bond documents. So, um, you know, the, you know, there, typically, Bill could go to a bank to lease equipment. And, and the, the bank basically puts a lien on, on the equipment. There's exceptions for doing like equipment leases that, um, you can just walk into a bank and, and do that. But they're getting repaid out of the general revenues of the town. It's not a specific general obligation pledge. So if a bank is willing to just do it out of whatever available revenue sources of the town without putting any real security lien on the town, then you could do that. But I have a feeling most banks don't want to do that these days.
Carl, how long does it take to put together this general obligation bond?
Probably you could do it within ninety days. So you'll have to hire bond counsel who would work with your local attorney, Chris. And, um, and then obviously, we could, if you would want us to serve as a financial advisor, uh, we need to put together some type of an offering document that could be circulated to the banks. And then there'd be a public bond sale notice, um, following, the council will have to, um, approve a bond ordinance that has the terms of the bonds. And then you would also have to appropriate the bond proceeds. So there'd be a public hearing on the pros, on the additional, um, for the bond proceeds, um, at a public hearing.
So we should really start on that now.
Yeah, if you want to start it, uh, we could get, you know, you would need to authorize us and, um, you know, get bond counsel involved so we, they could get you documents. But it could be done within ninety days.
One thing, Carl, um, you know, we talked a little bit about that, but with the stormwater utility that we've been talking about, you know, I'm, I'm always hoping that we can stretch the, the wording. Uh, that what we're trying to do is hold off stormwater, and it's not coming out of the sky, but coming from the lake. But would that also be something that we could, even if, even if we have to do something different for this immediate stop twenty-one, stop twenty-three? Um, you know, I, it would seem to me, I mean, we are talking about something that, that is, uh, it's water that's beating us down. And, uh, but is that, is that something you could see as possible?
Personally, I think I, I would, um, because again, it's involving water and erosion. And, um, you know, you're trying to maintain your structures. So I think there's some connection there, Bill.
Yeah.
So you could use some of those revenues also to maybe securitize a bond if you would want, but, um.
Yeah.
But then you're gonna take away from doing the, you know, the maintenance on the other dry wells, so.
Well, I could, you know, I mean, but I, I would agree with Pete. I mean, you know, at some point in time, you, you don't want to just keep, even if it's a small amount of money, if you don't need the five dollars a month, or you don't need the ten dollars and it only needs to be five. But I think for the time being, whatever magic number that we agreed to with the budget, I think, uh, I think for now, I, I can see that as something that we need for a while.
I'm gonna look to see, the, maybe we could even get those costs of issuance down because oftentimes you get a rating on the bonds because banks usually like to see some type, or underwriters, what the town's rating by Standard and Poor's would be. But if we're doing something less than a million, I think we, we could take, you know, obviously, having, um, a good high rating, like an A rating, helps lower the interest rate. But if you're trying to keep the cost of issuance down, you know, it probably, their base fee for Standard and Poor's is probably gonna be between five thousand and seventy-five hundred just to get a rating on this. So, and it's probably more like seventy-five hundred, to be honest. So I think with your approval, we wouldn't get a rating. And we try to keep the documentation to as bare minimum to maybe keep that cost of issuance as under, way under a hundred thousand if we could.
I'm struck that we probably should authorize Carl to go ahead and start that process. I don't know if we have the authority as this committee, though.
First problem, I mean, being, being realistic, Bob, ninety days isn't gonna do us any good. If we're, if we don't have something, if we don't have something in place to get this work done in the next forty-five days, we're gonna miss the window, we're gonna have to do temporary work.
Yeah, but Woodruff, Woodruff hasn't been sending out bills for work they do in any kind of timely manner anyway.
Yeah, but I, I don't know if your Woodruff's even gonna be your man at this point. If you, when we, when you start talking about a three-quarter, you know, half million dollar, three-quarter million, you're gonna have to bid it and all that. I mean, we're, this is what worries me, keeps me up at night. I mean, we're, we're almost at the window now. You know, you're, last year was Halloween when this whole thing started unfolding. So that's, you know, that's not even forty-five days away. We're not even anywhere close to getting something awarded. I mean, realistically, do we want to think about what we can afford out of our surplus funds for the temporary work even at this point? Rather than trying to get in a big rush? I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just throwing things around here, but I know we're already in, as far as calendar goes and what I understand about construction processes, we're behind the eight ball already. I mean, even getting the stuff ordered, right now, you can't even get shot rock in some cases. It's all being, if you've been, if you've been watching on Highway Twelve, there's boatloads of it going up to Michigan every day. So, you know, we're, we're probably gonna have to haul stuff out of Wisconsin now. I mean, there's lots of variables, but it's not a pretty picture.
Yeah, I thought they were, Woodruff, I know, was talking about this, you know, precast or manufactured huge boulders.
Right, but you know, that stuff's not sitting on a shelf, it has to be made. It's, it's much like the drainage structure. So let's say we, you know, October one, we said, yeah, we're ready to roll, which that's not even within the realm of possibility. You're gonna have a, a late lead time of four to six or whatever the weeks are before they even start shipping block one. So I say we're, I'm afraid, I hate to sound like Chicken Little, but.
Well, John, you could bar, if you have funds available from the town, we could do an inter-fund loan to get the project started. If presuming you do have bids, you know, that you have a, the lowest bidder that's gonna do the project, you could at least get some of those monies available. And the bond ordinance could also authorize what's called a bond anticipation note. So you could do a portion of that also through maybe a local bank. Now, that could be, that would be the other thought. Here's, here's something a little more creative. What if we did a bond anticipation note? You author, you still have a bond ordinance, but then through a bond anticipation note, you can negotiate directly with a local bank. And let's say we had it repaid over five years. I think the most you can do a ban is four years. So what if we establish a, basically, a four-year repayment, um, of this amount? And then it's normally, you're anticipating on issuing bonds to do the whole project. I actually did this, uh, for the city of Michigan City a number of years ago. You know, they built that new police station, and they secure, they use their casino funds, um, they, as the repayment source. And so they didn't really want to, we did do a general obligation pledge if, for some reason, the casino funds weren't there. But they basically paid off that police station in four years, um, with the amount that they budgeted from the casino funds. So we could do the same here, is, um, we still have to pass the bond ordinance. And the cost of issuance would be a fraction of what I'm talking, you know, what we were talking about before. But you would probably set a repayment schedule of less than ten years, you know, because, um, the ban, you can go up to four years, I believe, um, it can be renewed up to four years. And then you would have to either do a bond at that point or maybe reauthorize a new ban. That would get you a little bit quicker turnaround too, actually.
So then these monies, these monies then come out of town funds?
Uh, no, so basically, um, I, I'm thinking that, um, the security would be next year. Although I'm not sure, Bill, we, if we have time to put it, um, we'd have to notify Kurt Ott and put an estimate out before you publish the budget if you want to have it repaid from property taxes. So we have to come up with a source, Pete, of, and if it's property taxes, you could do it through this method. And then we would come up with an amortization schedule. If it's seven hundred fifty thousand times whatever the interest rate, let's say we factored in it's a two percent interest rate or whatever. We could put, and you want to repay it over four years? I could put a figure in that amount and then gives us a little bit of time to decide, you know, what your repayment plan is gonna be. At least to get something in the budget to advertise for the time being, uh, for next year. But we would need to close on this bond anticipation note this year in order to have the property tax levy for next year.
Okay, so that would be an additional levy then?
Okay, so that would be an additional levy then?
Yes, unless you have another source of funds, Pete, that you want to use to make this repayment from.
I, I understood, but if, if we did it, what you just described, now our, our taxes go for four different taxing authorities, right? Parks and schools and that sort of stuff. So this would be a, a separate one that would show up on.
It's for the town, so it'd be a new rate. Um, now keep in mind, it'll still be within the tax cap. So that if we establish whatever the amount, um, you know, at 750,000, over four years, you know, that's $187,000. If you're probably talking a couple cents on the tax rate, um, maybe even a half a cent even, um. So you're probably not going to have a huge circuit breaker impact. Um, but keep in mind, the circuit breaker is, oh, it gets shared with all the taxing units. So it's, you're not hit dollar for dollar. It's whatever the town's percentage of the total for your taxing unit. And you share with the schools, um, the county, the township. We all share the same based on our tax rate percentage to the total tax rate. Um, and so if circuit breakers go up 10%, you know, whatever your percentage of the total is, you're going to also experience some of that. But, you know, you may be talking a $200,000 levy, maybe a little bit more for next year. Um, if you want to do it over four years. Now you may say, Carl, let's do it over five or six years and we can do that. Um, but the council's going to need to give us some direction soon as to, you know, what the, kind of the repayment terms you want to be included in this.
But, but Carl, would that, that would give us, in other words, you know, I've gone from five pieces to my taxes when we took out the, the, you know, the lease, the lease for town. And we're, and now we've got General Park, MVH and CCD. This would be a fifth.
Correct. Yep.
Piece. Yeah. Okay. And, uh.
Well, I don't, I don't think you necessarily want to use your seat up revenues to repay this.
No. Yeah.
Because you want to, you keep that for other projects. And you also have the Long Beach Drive, um, project that's coming, you know, the sewer project that the town also has to, um, as, as I understand it, the, the SRF is going to require the town to put up some money as part of the debt service reserve, so.
Do we need to put this on the agenda for Monday's town council meeting?
Yes. Yeah.
And Carl, would you be able to attend that?
Uh, what time is that, uh, meeting going to be? Seven?
Seven.
Let me look on my calendar real quick here.
It's a virtual meeting, right? Yeah, just like this.
Yes, I would be available Monday evening at seven.
Okay. Go ahead and put us in and Bill add it to the agenda.
Yeah, we'll add it to the, now Carl, just to finish on the, on the stormwater utility, uh, what's the, what would be the turnaround on that if we get, I mean, that one we could do within a couple of months. Couldn't we getting the ordinance?
Sure. Sure. Yeah. Uh, you know, obviously we'll want your town attorney to review, you know, if I come up with a, a draft ordinance, he'll want to review it and maybe tweak it for your particular language. Um, so that could even come in October. Um, and then if you are ready for a rate, you can do that between October and the end of the year. Um, could be done pretty quickly.
Okay. Okay. Cause that, yeah, I'd like to, I think that, that, that one is, doesn't have the complications of the other thing. And I think, I think I'm, I'm friendly enough with Laurel that she would, she would, uh, agree to add something to the water bill.
We're running out of room, guys. We're running out of room.
Okay.
To, to put the, the stop 21 and 23, uh, project out to bid, where do we start with that process? Cause I understand because of the a dollar amount, it has to go out to bid. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that definitely.
Do you have an engineer that's putting the specs together? Cause he would need to put together kind of, um, a bid package, I think, right for.
That's the place to start.
Yep.
Oh, we, that, that's been started, I believe, Bob. You probably know as much as I do. I, I think, my understanding was that fate was going to do some survey work.
Right.
The delineator. And then I thought that the, that we had an engineer in tow to start on some of that.
Is Edgewater already starting on that?
I don't think it's Edgewater. I think.
You're right. You're right. Larry was talking to the other outfit.
Yeah.
So I need to talk with Larry or, and maybe you talk to Larry both, so we don't leave any stones unturned as far as moving this along as quickly as we can. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and we may have to think about some sort of accelerated process for our own permitting so that we don't wind up with a.
Yeah, and my thought is, is we, we may not be able to wait for the, we, we need to put everything together before we get this delineation. And then hopefully we can get the delineation at the last minute and throw it in there. Uh, but we shouldn't let everything wait on the delineation, that's for sure. Um, so I think that's probably the way to go. So I'll talk to Larry, you talk to Larry and we'll try and make sure we've got everything covered. And then we'll hopefully at the town council meeting authorize, um, this, um, Carl, to begin with the bond process.
So we're going to have two items that we're adding. We're adding, cause I want that, that to be separate. The, the stormwater utility.
Yep.
Needs to go on there and the, and the, and the bond.
Yep.
Just so we're clear, I think we're going down the bond anticipation note route, correct?
Right. It's still going to be like a general obligation bond, but we're going to plan to do the bond anticipation route. Um, if, if you're agreeable that, you know, probably a small tax rate to get this repaid over four or five years is doable, then this is probably a good option for you to do. It, it keeps the financing a lot simpler and, um.
Carl, just to confuse the issue completely here, um, if we want to at some point in one, two or three years, um, build a new fire station, how would we have to upgrade the bond anticipation note? Uh, you say we're, you, you say our constitutional debt limit is about 3.5.
Yep. And if we use 750 now, but as that pays off in a couple of years, you know, that's down to three. So maybe, you know, in two years, you'd be probably down to maybe what, half of that, uh, 220 or a little less, 230 some. Um, I mean, you're still going to have over 3 million available. I don't know what the cost of a fire station would be, but you're probably at least that, huh?
No, we're, it's only an addition, Carl. We're probably, it's basically a, an addition. I don't think it's going to exceed a million.
Okay. So again, you could do another general obligation bond. Um, and you would still be within your constitutional debt limit.
But is that going to be another, um, $100,000 to, or do we think about that now? Or do we think about that in two or three years?
Um.
To avoid the $100,000 bond fees and all that junk?
Yeah. I mean, at this point, um, we'll, we'll have to think about that later. I, I think let's get this project done and get, and maybe get this, this may get paid down a little bit till you're ready to do it. Um, we could even wrap the debt around so that we pay interest only until this one's paid off to keep the rate as low as possible. Um, but again.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if the local bank misspoke or not, but they were, the very costs that you're discussing, they thought were not necessary because they, they felt that there was a way for them to make a loan for the building addition. I don't, I don't know if they, maybe we were.
The problem is, the town cannot give, um, a mortgage on your fire station. That's the problem. The state statute prohibits giving a mortgage unless you create a separate nonprofit building corporation. Then you can do that. Okay. Like the schools do. Um, and that's mainly so the schools can get outside the constitutional debt limit. There you would have to have a separate board of directors and, you know, it's, it's a lot more involved. So for what you're talking, I don't think you want to do that. So I think we want to operate within the state statute and treat it like a general obligation bond subject to your constitutional debt limit.
Okay. I think we've, uh, I, I'm tapped out. Anybody else got anything?
Right. Just one, one clarification. So Bob, would it be all right if I talked to Chris, your attorney, to see maybe bond counsel who he would, would want us to work with?
Hmm. Yeah, I think let's talk to him. We can be that much ahead when, when we meet on Monday. And that'll appraise Chris of what we're looking at too. Uh, so yeah, so, yep. Is, is Harbor Trust, uh, um, bond counsel for anything or not?
No. No, they're a finance company.
Okay.
Or kind of like an investment company. Um, they could also bid on the ban too, if they want.
Okay.
Um, so Bob, I'll go ahead and give Chris a call and, and, and then I'll put together, um, our engagement letter to serve as your municipal advisor for this particular financing. We are a regulated, um, municipal advisor by the SEC and the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. So I do need to have an engagement letter, um, that I present to you. And, um, either the council or the, as the president, you can sign it, uh, to, um, to authorize us to move forward.
So hopefully we can do that after Monday's meeting.
Yeah, that would be great.
Sounds good. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
It's only an hour, but it seems like we do.
We're certainly talking about spending a lot of money, that's for sure.
You got Mr. Rizby raised his hand there, Bob.
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Rizby, go ahead. Let me make sure, uh, let me unmute you. I think you need to unmute yourself too. There you go.
Yeah. I think a couple of suggestions on the stormwater utility which we talked about. I think Keith mentioned earlier sometime it may need to remove. Why don't we have the first couple of years, $2, $10 a year? And then off thereafter will be reduced to $5 a year. So that way everybody knows we're going to take a step back. First two years will be $10 a year. Thereafter will be reduced to $5 a year. And the community will also know ahead that this is what the steps we are taking to collect this stormwater and why we are taking $10 and why we're reducing to $5.
That might make it easier to sell.
Exactly. And the second suggestion will be, I think there is a lot of USDA loans are available under the CARE Act, but a lot of the cities which you can get at very low rate and very quickly because there's a lot of monies available right now to apply for that. Maybe you want to explore that. The second thing is, I think what you are doing, if you are going to go towards the bond, you probably may be able to get a bridge loan from the bank towards that to speed up the process and get the bridge loan while you have the bridge loan, while you're going through the process, then when, once you issue the bond, then you can pay off the bridge loan. So that will be other thing. One thing which I noticed, I think I, I have some friends which were visiting me over the beacon. We crossed through the stop 20. When we stopped, he, he's a lawyer. You know, a lawyer always give you some kind of suggestions when you're walking through, but I don't really know how far he's through. He mentioned that the, the steps from coming from, uh, at least stop 20, those steps is not qualified under the ADA Act. Uh, I think he said Title II Indiana Code, because you can like, cannot access, handicap cannot access those steps. So you are required by the Indiana law that they must, these must be accessible for the handicap. So may, maybe when you do the stop 24 or something, please make sure they comply with the ADA.
Yeah, that is the plan.
Yeah. So that's, but he certainly mentioned that these steps don't, is not applying for the ADA because handicap cannot access that. So I don't really know that it's how, because as I said, the town is always has some suggestions because that's what their job is. So that's what he was going, walking through and he said, oh, this is not ADA access. If they are calling this, uh, public access, public access must be under the Title II of Indiana Code. So it's not compliant with that. So that's two things I wanted to bring back to.
And step, step 24, step 24 has been designed with the slopes such that it is accessible. I think you may be confusing, there was a, a specific project for stop 15 that was going to provide ADA access with an, with a, a grant specifically for ADA improvements. And that project is about, is on hold right now. That, that also involved a grant.
Yep.
No, I, I was talking about stop 20. When you go to stop 20, you have to go, uh, you did the steps. It's not ADA access. The wheel, it cannot access by the wheelchair. Because all these steps which, if they were old, they were there, then they says, a, as you change a new construction you add, they have to comply with ADA under the Title II. So in this case, certainly I do not know other steps because that's the only stuff I took that day with him. And he certainly said, this certainly is not complying with the ADA Title II. So you may want to check that. I, I am not sure, I'm not a townie and he, he was just giving that unsolicited suggestions. So please make sure to check that because if, if the town is not complying with those zoning laws, then how can we ask other people to comply?
I think, you know, one of the problems with our stops is that the slope is, is so steep that it's impossible to make an ADA compliant access. And I don't know that stop 20 is necessarily one of those, um, but that is an issue at some of our stops.
So, no, I, I, I'm just a messenger. I, you know, so I, I apologize if I wasn't.
No, not a problem. We appreciate it.
That's what I heard from him. So I thought I better let you know. The other thing which I think we have to, I think Bob mentioned previous meeting that, you know, we don't want to be like Chicago mayor. But one thing I noticed is, is I think financial committee probably should look at it. Our legal cost is out of control. In like 2016, it was $180,000. Last year it was about $144,000. So I think if we are trying to cut all these expenses and looking for other way to generate the revenue, then we need to be reviewing all these expenses, others too, that where we can control and not continuously carry on. Really spending that lot of money and particularly legal cost, I cannot believe that if that, you know, 186,243,000 for such a small town. And that money is actually more than we are spending on the paving or allocated for the paving for the streets. So will you please make sure that we look, look at these expenses so that they are not out of control?
Yeah. You know, one of the problems is, is we have more lawyers per capita than any city in Indiana, except for Carmel probably. Uh, and everybody wants to sue everybody else. Uh, I just.
You, you're exactly correct, Bob. Unfortunately, that's the main problem. Why can't we people just sit, sit down with as a gentleman, that's all the issues that are going to go. But unfortunately, that's the way it is. But small town like, you know, that's a taxpayer money, that my money goes to the 180, 186,000 and 144,000 dollar. And sometimes that money is used against the taxpayer. So that's what I'm really concerned about is that if we're going to control all, if you're going to add all these expenses, $5, $10, $20, $30, then we need to also review how we can cut down other expenses.
I, I'm having a problem with the Zoom. It keeps dancing all over the place, Mr. Rizby. But if you could hear me, an awful lot of those legal costs are defensive against the suits that have been filed by our own population. If, if we can somehow limit that, I, I mean, if we can, you know, people like yourself can put some pressure on some of these individuals. I'm a, I've been told that, you know, there's a, a group that's hiring an attorney, uh, to fight the sewer project. So instead of, you know, having civil discourse at a meeting, we wind up with lawsuits. So I mean, I, we had, we're in our obligation to protect the town fiscally in the long run. And if that includes. And if that includes spending legal fees against lawsuits from our own population, that's what we have to do sadly.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate. You're exactly right. Some other people tried to reach out to several community members including us. I got some emails and I said, I'm not going to be part of this nonsense. No, no. We, we have to work together. We are a community. I mean, there is always give and take. And, you know, not everybody going to be happy with every single project. But that does not mean somebody is correct, somebody is wrong. That's why we elected these members and they are looking for the benefits of all the community, not just one side. And, but unfortunately you're correct, you know, but, you know, I was trying to look at for some expenses, how do we cut down? It may be not correct, a place to cut down. Okay, that, that's it. Thank you.
What is gone?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not sure where everybody went. I, I only have Mr. Rizvi and Laurel and Becky, I think is recording, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm not sure what automated date it is, but I'm afraid that we've lost everybody else. Do you guys have any more than that on your screens?
No, I also have only five people.
I guess maybe we just call it quits. So Laurel, do you have anybody else? I've only got, oh, now Carol's back now, I guess.
No, Carol came back. I think we all kind of got lost. And then I don't know, maybe if Bob and Pete just left, but.
Yeah, I, I think I just came back, yeah.
So I have nothing else, um.
I think we had a little Zoom problem, Carl. That's what we're just discovering. So I, I think we're probably at a point where we can adjourn.
Yeah, Carl, can you look at the USDA loan? Is that available since you seem to be very knowledgeable about these kind of thing?
The CARES Act does not apply to governmental entities. It does apply to businesses and nonprofits, but not to governmental entities.
Actually, I will send you, I have actually that information. And actually, it does apply to some rural, small communities. It's, it's clearly stated that.
Okay, well.
Yeah, will you please look at, it's clearly stated.